Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. God who is our Creator and Sustainer, the source of grace and truth, guide this council in the decisions to be made, and help us in all things to seek to do your will, to give honor and glory to your presence that you have placed in each one of us, and that we may rejoice in the spirit of community that binds us together. In your name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1, here.
Jay Stapp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Roy Crute, Ward 6.
Thank you, Connie. We've got about three hours of business to do tonight. Hope I've at least settled in real well. I'm just kidding. Our first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our March 21st meeting. Council, you've had these well in advance of tonight. Chair will entertain any edits, corrections, or motions.
Didn't see any edits or corrections. Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved unanimously. We have a proclamation this evening. Mr. Osborne, if you'd step forward, please.
I will defer to Sherri Henshaw, Director of Keep Barto Beautiful.
Step forward, please, Ms. Henshaw, and for our clerk, name an address.
Sherri Henshaw, Keep Barto Beautiful, and my address is 189 Knucklesville Road. I live in the county. Sorry about that, Mayor, but I do work for the city. I'm in Riddell, by the way. Yes, Mayor, Council, I'd like to, let me lower this a little bit, I'd like to address the council about something that I am so excited about and so pleased. We, as you know, have, Keep Barto Beautiful has, was started in 2000, and the city is an active participant in that program. And as I started the program, I came to know someone that is such a special person that we're going to be honoring today, and that is Ray Southern. That was the head of your Public Works Department. And Ray always was a joy to work with. He always was supportive and helpful. And I had suggested, and Bobby Elliott soundly agreed with me, that it would be such a great thing to name our annual cleanup after Ray in his memory. And so, we're doing that today, and the family is here to recognize him. And I'm surprised this is not Friday afternoons. Ray used to tease me all the time and say I always waited till Friday afternoons to come in and ask him when he was getting ready to go fishing. But it always was good timing because he'd do what I needed him to do and get on out of there. So, we had our things all worked out. Anyway, we're here, and we'd like to ask you if you would please, oh, real quick, our cleanup is April 20th in the Atco community, and we have some great things going on. It's going to be a community day as well. And Richard Osborne and I have been working hard on this, and we've got so many people participating in it. We've got flyers going around, and we hope we have a great turnout as we have been having in the past.
Wonderful. Well, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas Ray Southern, both as the Director of Public Works for the City of Cartersville and as a lifelong resident of Barto County, worked tirelessly to improve, protect, and preserve the beauty of the city he called home. And whereas Ray was part of the six-member pre-certification committee that helped establish a local certified affiliate of Keep Bar, Keep America Beautiful, Inc., through the extensive work of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs and Keep Georgia Beautiful. And whereas he was a member emeritus of Keep Barto Beautiful, which was established with board members approved by local city and county governments in November of 2000. And while serving with KBB, he helped formulate the extensive visual litter index that Keep Barto Beautiful does throughout each county, throughout the county each spring, as well as assisted with the training of volunteer teams to annually perform the visual litter index. And whereas, as an enthusiastic participant, Ray assisted in numerous community cleanup efforts, beautification projects, and recycling initiatives undertaken by the City of Cartersville in conjunction with Keep Barto Beautiful. And whereas Ray Southern served as a deacon at Atco Baptist Church, headed the church building committee, and was deeply dedicated to the safety, preservation, and beautification of the Atco community, as well as all areas of the City of Cartersville, as not only his job, but as a point of personal pride in his community. And whereas Keep Barto Beautiful wishes to commemorate the annual City of Cartersville Atco Community Cleanup in his honor, thus providing annual recognition of one of the program's founding fathers. And whereas Ray Southern was a family man, a mentor, a boss, an employee, a friend, beloved by so many, and remembered with fondness as a man of honor, character, and strong convictions that made a difference in the quality of life that all Cartersville residents still enjoy today. Now therefore, it is in honor, excuse me, now therefore in honor of his more than 30 years of service to the City of Cartersville, his decade of service to Keep Barto Beautiful, and his lifetime of service as a good steward of God's earth, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Cartersville, do proclaim Saturday, April 20th, 2013, as Ray Southern Day, and encourage all citizens of the city to express their appreciation by joining and doing their part to keep the community he loved clean and beautiful, and to assist others through education, enforcement, and volunteer activities to do the same. And I will present that to... I don't know if I must present this to you. I love to have the family.
The family, I think it's half the people here. If you know, I'd like to have a picture of the mayor and then Sandra twice here, and I want her to have that.
Well, if you clap for me, I didn't write this song.
Sandra, get on in. Sandra, do you want Jerry on this?
Yeah, get Jerry up there.
Is Sam not here? She's trying to snap.
And Mr. Quist. If you would step forward with our second part of recognitions tonight.
Indeed. Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. As you all know, back in early February, the city launched its inaugural Cartersville Citizens Academy. And I'm here tonight, proud to say that we have completed that first-ever class. We had 21 wonderful members of the class. The attendance throughout was wonderful. In fact, I believe that most of them had better attendance than I did because I hadn't missed one. But a great group of people. In fact, I was just thinking about this, and the first, the very first session, we talked a little bit about the history of Cartersville, and Mayor, you were there, and I remember, I brought up, you know, I was covering some of the statistics and demographics about our community, and I kind of went through this whole spiel. Here's what the census says about Cartersville. And you got up there and mentioned that, you know, all that's good and well, but what you see when you look at Cartersville are all the unique individuals and the wonderful people that make this community what it is. And, you know, whether it's a business owner, a mom, a doctor, a lawyer, whatever, these are individual people. And that, that view, I was almost embarrassed after you said that. I was like, man, why was I talking about demographics? But that view was just reinforced by this class. Just a fantastic group of people. I'm honored to have been able to really kind of go through the class with them. And I also want to thank all the department heads. They did a great job of putting together the material. And, you know, my goal was for, for the folks that went through the academy to see the employees of the City of Cartersville are committed or caring people, were passionate about the work that we do. And I feel proud of our people. I feel like we met that goal. We were able to introduce ourselves to the folks in the, in the class. And I think it was a wild success, would be the words I would use to describe it. But it wouldn't have been that way without the commitment of the folks in the class. They, like I said, they came to every meeting. They asked great, smart questions. It was really a wonderful eye-opening experience, I think, for everybody involved. So, I do think that it would be appropriate to honor them. We've invited them here tonight. And I would like to present them all with a certificate, just to acknowledge their participation. And actually, I believe that one of the members of the class, Mrs. Lynn Pritchett, would like to come say a few words on behalf of the class.
Mayor, Council, Sam, thank you all very much for initiating this class. We, you know, to say it's a success is an understatement. You all brought together people from across the community. We didn't know each other. Now, I think we all feel like we're friends. All the classes have been informative, educational, entertaining. The tours of the public safety building, the water treatment plant were just phenomenal. Tom was right. We had a great participation and attendance. Everybody was enthused. People asked great questions. But the thing you should be most proud of are your department heads. I have never seen so many people excited about their job. Their enthusiasm and their love for this community really did shine through. Tom, you exceeded your goal. We, excuse me. David, you did a great job on the first meeting. I mean, you stole the show. Everybody wanted to hear more about the history of Cartersville. But it was entertaining. And like I said, the department managers or superintendents were just phenomenal. Their staff is great. I'm proud to be a part of this group, and I think everybody here is also proud. We will encourage everybody to attend this class. I hope that you continue to do it at least once a year from now on. It's been a huge success. So, a special thanks goes to the, not the assistant city manager, but the assistant to the city manager. We have learned his title, and we know his name, and we know who to call now to get things done. He did a great job of getting everybody together, and the slideshow presentations, and getting everything back in the drop box, so we'd all have copies of everything. But Tom Quist is a great guy. Thank you, Tom, for everything you did. And thank you again, Council, Mayor, and City Manager. Thank you.
That was way, way nicer than I expected.
No, I didn't say anything.
I promised them I wasn't going to cry, so I held up my empathy.
And I didn't say anything about something.
Okay. At this point, I'd just like to individually recognize everybody. I appreciate you all bearing with us. Some of these folks aren't here, but I'm going to say their name anyways, and we'll make sure they get their certificate. This is Suzanne Benoit. This is Don Bryant. And if y'all just want to come on, oh, you are here. Sorry. There's anybody there. I'm glad you're here. Once they up here, we're going to take a picture. So, if y'all just want to kind of like file off to the side there, that'd be wonderful. The next one is Mr. Arthur Carter.
Mayor Richard O'Donnell, come down here and help me, him these out. It's a two-handed job. And I guess it's a three-handed job.
She just finished talking about how capable you were to handle it.
Assistant to, since you're better than assistant.
Well, Tom, we know that really, when you want to get something done, you got to talk to the mayor.
Okay. This is Holly Delaney. I believe she's at another Citizens Academy tonight. This is Allison Dillon. Mr. Ben Hammer. This is Patsy Hedrick. Everybody does Patsy. Mr. Larry Henderson. This is Mary Hogenson. This is Valerie Holt. Roger Hendricks. Maureen Kirkshaw. Sam Alon. No, I think I got one. All right then. Okay. This is Charlene Long. Okay. Mr. Griffin Long. Andrew Bagel.
Mr. Mox.
All right. Can we give another round of applause, please?
Get the photo up.
Tom, he needs you in the picture.
Come on now. Y'all know each other. I forgot to prop you out. Before you all make a beeline for the exit, on behalf of the city, I do want to thank
you for being part of this group and for taking the time, and it was a tremendous time commitment. And we're real happy that, that you had a positive experience. And we will ask you to make sure that you recommend this to other folks, and that when somebody's complaining about the city, you can at least point them to, or maybe defend us a little bit. But I'd also be remiss, this whole program was really the brainchild of Councilman Tonsmire at one of our visioning sessions. So, I just wanted to recognize that. And congratulations. I know you must feel a great sense of gratification over...
I do.
...a well-pulled-off plan. You're welcome to stay, but you can go too, if you want.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. We have got, our next item of business is the appointment and swearing-in
of our municipal court judge. Ms. Keeling, you're going to handle that. And you're also going to do a two-for-one deal, and we'll get our city attorney all sworn in and sworn out.
Yeah, I think we should do a picture.
So, I'll let you handle that.
I thought we spread that I would support the Constitution of the United States of the State of Georgia, that I would always state, we state, observe the divisions of the chapter and offices of the City of Cartersville, and that I will faithfully research the duty to the office of the Municipal Court, and I will truly find to be faithful to the terms of duty set upon, the best of my ability to do your favorite for the House of Representatives.
Get an ink pen out.
I would like to let everybody, I have a personal matter to make, and I would walk.
I would like to put straight that I was supporting the Constitution of the United States of Georgia, that I would always state, observe the divisions of the chapter and offices of the City of Cartersville, and that I will faithfully research the duty to the office of the Municipal Court.
I would like to take an opportunity to, to just let this body, the council and the mayor, know that it's an honor and a privilege to serve as the Municipal Court Judge for the City of Cartersville, and I appreciate the opportunity over the last years and the upcoming year.
Thank you.
And I'd just like y'all to know I'm getting real tired up.
So weak.
He probably said the same thing in 1976. Mr. Manino.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The name of Valerie Holt has been submitted to our office to be placed on the agenda to fill up one of the vacant positions on our Historic Preservation Commission. This appointment is a three-year term. If approved, her term will end September 2015. And your approval of Ms. Holt for this appointment is recommended.
Any discussions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard, Valerie. We have got a brief presentation of our fiscal 2012 audit. Tom, are you starting this off with this, or are we just going to call on Mr. Williamson? Lloyd, the floor is yours.
I appreciate y'all. I don't know how brief, 133 pages I can make it, but we will try to recap it in 10 pages, keep it real short and sweet. We do appreciate you having, allowing us to work with the audit this year. It's what we started, I started doing 30 years ago. And it still is interesting at times, and like anything else, boring at times. But working with different cities, it keeps it intriguing. We're always having some little issues. But the recap here, like I said, it is a recapping of 133 pages. If, I think all of you have it in a packet. If you need it on a PDF, we will be sending one, if we have an RRE, to Tom, and he can forward it to you, and you will read it. It's your leisure. Look through there. It does have a lot of nice, just full information in there about the city. There are some charts in there going back eight to 10 years, show you how the city's grown, ups and downs, what to bank, entity-wide. There's entity-wide, there's fund balances, a lot of good information on there. But for 2000, and June 30th, 2011, the city did receive the financial report, an excellent financial reporting, which is, it's not received by everyone that submits it. Not a lot of these cities do submit it. A lot of them do not want to go through the, it's a lot of effort put on by the city's finance department to receive this award, and a lot of them just do not, are not able to because they don't have the skills necessary. So, it is a, it is an honor to receive this, and I think, I don't know how many years the city's been getting this now. It's a lot of years. So, it's, you know, nicely privileged. He told me, he said, you want me to do it, or you do it. I said, I can't talk and work. At the same time, I said, I'll let you work the slide project. That's the certificate. Like I said, it is given to the city, and it's on a plaque. And I forgot, I think it's only about 3% of all participants who apply for it do receive it. And very few, so it is an honor to get it. And it helps you also, if you're applying for bond ratings, GFA loans, it gets you a lower rate. Gets you, on a scale of 200, to get a GFA loan. If you've got the GFA, you automatically get 100 points, just automatically across the board. It gives you 100 to 200 and a quarter. So, it is, it helps you on that. Excellent. It's eaten in three minutes doing that slow. But, okay, changes in net assets for the 10 years presented on page 102. If you got the, you know, if you wanted to go over there, on page 102, it shows you the statements for over 20 funds, and it goes, and it gives you a recap of all it. I'm not going to try to go into all of them, but if you'll look on page, starting at page 102, you'll see all the funds you get. The city has over 20 funds. You've got the general fund, the water and sewer, the, here's the first of all. You've got the confiscated drug, the water and sewer, gas, electric. You've got the SLOSS funds. You've got a lot of funds combined in here. If I get too fast, you can kind of slow down, trying to keep it real quick and sweet. The next slide. Here is the main fund that encompasses every city. When you start out, you have a general fund. From that point, you add on to it. And so, this is the main fund, the general fund. It encompasses, it includes the fires, the police, administrative, the streets and roads, public works, recreation. It encompasses all this. And if you'll notice, from June 30th of 2011, and a lot of cities look at your monthly financial statements on a cash basis. So, that's, most cities are worried about, how's my cash now compared to last month? So, in other words, from June 30th, 2011 to June 30th, 2012, you increased your cash basis, 675,000. That's not an easy thing to do. The last, you know, they keep saying, economy's getting better, economy's getting better. In the southeast, it's sort of stalled out. It does seem to be getting a little better this year. But for the last year, and I'm always working in the past, I'm talking about financial statements issued six months ago, nine months ago. So, I'm always working in the past, not normally this far in the past. But we'll get to that in just a little bit. But y'all have increased your cash basis, 675,000. Your total assets increased, actually decreased, classes, 685. How can that happen? Well, receivables go down, your cash goes up, but your receivables go down. Some of your net assets go down. So, overall, though, cash-wise, you're still better off June 30th, 2012 than you were June 30th, 2011. Go on to the next one. These are your statements of revenue and expenditures. As you'll notice, the majority of your money, $27 million, comes in from taxes. Of that $15 million comes in from property taxes. In 2000 and June 30th, 2012, your property taxes was $15,412,000, and that was at 18.61 meals. And 2000 and June 30th, 2011, property taxes was $15,889,000. Same mileage, it's just the property taxes, those things declined. So, your money that you brought in for property taxes declined somewhat, which happened all across most states, most counties. So, it's not all that unusual at all. Hopefully, that will slow down some. The next items down through there, you'll notice that you did have an increase in total expenditures, went from $38 million to $40 million in total expenditure. Your biggest increase was in the fire department. The expenses went from $4,400,000 to $5,700,000, of which $170,000 was for wages, increased wages, increase in fringes, $130,000, which I think everybody knows about the increase in fringes. That's health insurance, dental insurance, your retirement. All of these have increased, that increased $130,000. Of this, $1,360,000. One of the biggest ones was you purchased a lot of new equipment, $708,000, which is a one-time thing. You have to do that every few years. You have just a huge expenditure for equipment. So, $700 of that, $1,300,000 was for equipment. Next line. This, these are your three main enterprise funds, business funds. You've got the water and sewer. You've got the water and sewer, electric and gas fund. Were it not for these three funds, you would have to increase your millage rate probably another eight mils, to generate the profit that these make, to keep, so the city can keep the millage rate as low as it is. Most of your millage rates were the school system anyway, so the city is very fortunate to have these enterprise funds. These enterprise funds transferred over to the general fund in excess of four million dollars in the past year. You know, that helps you a lot, so if you were a business, like on, for instance, the electric fund, in June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, made a, oh, there. Made a profit of a million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. If you were a business and you did that, you would think you were doing pretty good, and so they take that profit, transfer it to the general fund, to keep the millage rate down, and help all the other departments. And you'll see that the cash in the water and sewer decreased four hundred and thirty-two thousand, the cash in the electric fund increased a million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, so, and you hope for, in the electric department, you hope for a hot summer, in the gas department, you hope for a cold winter. We haven't had much of a cold winter in the last couple of years, so hopefully, I keep looking to move it, but we can't, we've got three grandkids and they love the snow, so we don't get a lot of that around here. The next page, next slide, is nothing other than a reverse of the assets of the funds, and this is your liability side, and you'll see down at the bottom in the green, you'll see that net assets, net assets are assets less liabilities. It's called net assets and governmental net worth, people realize what net worth is if you're looking at individuals. Net worth in the sewer fund increased four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, electric fund, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, gas fund decreased, two hundred and four thousand, and these net increases or decreases are after transferring money to the general This is the income statement for the water, sewer, electric and gas, and I've got comparative, next side by side, showing the increase and decrease. Total operating revenues in the water and sewer increased sixteen thousand, not a big deal, but at least it did increase. Electric did increase to a million. Water, I mean, excuse me, the gas fund, revenues decreased, and a lot of this has to do with the fact that gas sales have been, but you did continue to transfer out, total transfers from all three departments in excess of four million dollars.
Unless you got a problem.
Next one. I know I'm going over my three minutes, so. Page twenty-four, if you'll look in your financial statements on page twenty-four, this is your capital projects, these mainly are SLOs funds, you've got a number of capital projects funds, but your capital projects funds pulled in four million, eight hundred thousand compared to prior years, four million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand. That is mainly because of the decrease in sales, sales tax collected, get ghosts of the state come back to the city, there were less sales, hence, you got less sales tax for SLOs funds. And all of this money, you receive it, and it can only be used for what's approved for, so it's not like you, you hoard it, so you get it, you build it up, and you spend it. So you receive four, four million dollars, and you spend eleven million, that's what you got it for, so you've got to spend it out, so it's not that you overspend or anything, you just got it, and you've been spending on the project, so you're doing what you're supposed to, for the most part. There's a little, another little thing that y'all got to work on, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, we got that on, we actually got that on the agenda tonight.
It's on the agenda tonight. And believe it or not, we have that happen at least probably once a year, moved to every city, we do it a number of cities, it's not all that uncommon.
You were looking for it, weren't you?
Well, you gotta find something. Page twenty-seven of the budget, on page twenty-seven of the financial statements, this is budget compared to actual, what controls the city is the budget and the general fund. You're always operating under the budget, you're not supposed to exceed your budget. The only three departments you exceed the budget, really it's immaterial, it's not all that bad, budget is a working tool. The general fund, government, you exceed the budget, seven million, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. The police department exceeded budget, one thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The public works exceeded budget, a thousand, one hundred and five dollars. I mean, this is really immaterial, and if it was either a requirement in the audit report, we wouldn't even mention this, except you did exceed the budget, you know, very minor, nothing, we didn't consider it material at all. Page thirty-four, retirement fund, this is, most cities are having a problem with this, you hear that, the states have a problem with, federal government has a problem with, everything's un, underfunded, because you've got all the actuarial studies that says that you owe this much for retired people, future retiring people, and, but the retirement fund has twenty-eight million dollars at current market value, depending on what the funds are, and it fluctuates depending on the market. I think I heard today there was market value increased fifty-five points, or something like that. That was an increase from prior year of a million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and this increase, you had a million, two hundred and sixteen thousand in interest and dividends earned, and a, this, and the prior year had an increase of three million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, not quite as good as six thirty-two thousand and eleven, but you're still, you're getting up there, and there is a schedule in the back here where it shows what the funded, unfunded, and actually, the next slide will show that, if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide, it will show while we're talking about this. This shows you the, your, there's your asset values and your liabilities, unfunded, and a lot of that unfunded is not necessarily, it's not the city's fault, it's just the market value, it's, you know, if you've got retirement funds with any of the investment houses around, you know, you'll get a statement that says you lost money, you, you know, the only time you worry about that is when you retire, and...
How is that percentage relative to other cities?
Basically, it's pretty close, you know, the dollars will change, depending on the city's investments, but in most cities, for the last five to six years, have been underfunded. There for years, you were overfunded, there were times, there were times I would see cities overfunded, but not in the last six, eight years, you just haven't been seeing it because there was such a loss six, eight years ago, and it came back, then another loss four years ago, and it's just hard to come back from those, and you keep pumping money in here, the exact where it was, they'll give you these studies, until you have to put more money and more money in, and most cities and most governments are getting a lot of old employees, and, so, let's see, the next thing, I guess, so we can get to it, on page, page one twenty-five to one twenty-six of the audit report, is talking about schedule of binding, and I'll go over there if there's nothing else on, on the slides, but if you wanted to look at the very last pages on one twenty-six, one twenty-five to one twenty-six, you know, we always have the good, I've sort of been going over the good part of it, you know, the city's done, I think, very well, you received an unqualified report, you received a GFO certificate, you've increased your cash balances, increased your net assets of the cities, you know, increase, increase, so now the bad, you had the good, now the bad. We've got two significant deficiencies, we define them significant deficiencies, and these are on page one twenty-five, one twenty-six. Reporting expenditures and expenses, we've already gone over these, and you've got a response in here, talking with the finance department, they've got a response to them. Expenditures being posted into the wrong period, so that gets, you know, takes some effort to find out where these are, have to figure that and reclass them. Then the timely financial reporting, a lot of this, you have several actuarial reports that you have to get, and it's not one of those things that you call up and say, "I need this next week." No, it, it takes some time, you have to give them information. Fortunately, most of them are on a January to December, so early in January, February, March of this year, you could be getting that information to them, so they can have it for you early in July. You know, it depends, you get it to them, they get it, because if they're doing it for January to December, so it's one of the things, they can be getting the information up and getting it to them, and it just sort of slips through the cracks, and, oops, we've got to get that, so, it's one of the things, sort of, if it wasn't for sticky notes and calendars and stuff, I'd be forgetting stuff all the time. My kids laugh at me when I go out and put on my dash of my car, a sticky note, to remember to go buy so-and-so the first thing in the morning. You know, I had to have those, you know, I understand, it's sort of a little picture system. There was also some unauthorized SLOs expenditures, which you're going to address a little later, and it's, you know, it happens, so you just work with the county, get an amendment on the board, and you, you know, it's taken care of. But at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, here again, I'm always working in the past, and we stumbled across that, it's too late to go back, and I'm changed for June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, so, so we have to write that in. But overall, like I said, it was, you know, except for the timeliness, because always, if we can, it's nice to be able to get the information to us, we do the interim work, we do have several full profit that we do that are December year-ends, and we've already issued an audit report for them, I mean, here it is, March, and we're through with the report, but we do work in June, we do work in October, and we send out confirmations and everything in early January, they close out the first week of February. It is hard for government units to do that, when you've got so many departments and so much going on and compliance issues, whereas they have one set of financial statements, I've got one that we finished, they have four hundred million dollars in sales, they have eleven hundred employees, their financial statement says eighteen pages long, that's it. They don't have near the volume of compliance and reporting issues that a city or government does, that's caused of all these layers of your, of requirements that the federal and state has put on you, and it, you know, makes it very cumbersome, hard to read, so. Do you have any questions? And I do this all the time, you know, give you a hundred and three pages and go through it in real quick, say, "Do you have any questions?" You know, I hadn't even had, you know, you say, "Darn, I hadn't even had a chance to look through a chat," but if you have any questions, really, the, one of the best persons to ask the question of it would be Tom. These are so summarized, these are your trial balances, and I mean, all these little numbers have hundreds of postings to them, he can drill down and tell you what's in those. I can, I can pull up the report, I can drill down and look at it, and see it, but don't have, but he can call it up when he's right there, if you really have any question, what makes up this total general fund, you know, it's, it's a grouping of, you know, a hundred and forty accounts, and in those hundred and forty accounts, it's thousands of postings, he can tell you what makes up all of that. But if you have any questions, he's got my email, you know, we're right over here on Tennessee Street, you can give us a call, and we'll be glad, and it'd be nice, one thing that I think we've mentioned in the past, if you would have set up a financial audit committee, and that would be a good time for two elected officials, the finance department manager, assistant manager, you know, we can sit there, it's not a call meeting, we can spread all this out on the table, go over it in depth, and go over in, you know, spend a lot more time, that's something to consider in the future, another committee or somebody.
They're ready to volunteer, right?
But, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to address them now and/or at any time, if you wanted to send me an email.
Pretty good.
That's for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Thanks.
That requires no action, does it? Please, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan. Yes, sir. Mayor, next item on the agenda is a grant from George Department of Transportation for engineering at the airport. The cost to the airport authority is thirteen hundred and fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents, the rest of the cost, the total grant's fifty-three thousand dollars, it's coming between the federal and state. Recommend approval of this grant, it's going to run through the city's books, so we have to basically accept the grant, and the mayor and the city clerk have to sign off some paperwork. Any discussion?
This for drainage, right?
Yes. All for a motion.
Second.
Motion to approve. Motion to second, all in favor, DeCade, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Everybody's asleep.
Honorable mayor and council, in April of two thousand and seven, an intergovernmental agreement was signed with Martha Cagney, through the, with the city, this filled out the SLOs two thousand and seven expenditures, there were some erroneous attachments in there. Item E in the attachment R was incorrectly stated as acquire property and rebuild fire headquarters and station three, it should have been acquire property and rebuild fire headquarters and stations. The attached amendment is part of the way to fix this, as Lloyd said, we needed to fix it today. The attached amendment deletes the item E in the original, yes, in the original agreement, excuse me, and, and his entire entity, and it replaces it with a revised ver, with a revised version. I recommend your approval for this.
Okay, questions, comments, or discussion?
Just a comment, this is what he referred to as the unauthorized SLOs expenditures, and I guess I would take issue with that description of it, this was done with council's full knowledge, relative to the location of the stations, and us deciding to move the main station over by Cassville Road, and then reopen the one over here. This does clean it up, though, we'd like David to look at, and the auditors to look at, it's a thing we need to do, so.
Correct. Thank you for that clarification, because the implication is almost offensive. Any discussion, if not a motion, it'll be in order. So move.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, DeCade, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, continue on.
Next item is, is in budget amendment, it's a two-part budget amendment, there are, this is the second reading, there have been no changes since the first reading. The first part of the budget amendment is the impact fee amendment, where I'm looking to amend it by a hundred and fifty-three thousand, six, sixty-eight, seventy-three, and is broken down by going to the general fund, thirty-six thousand, nine, thirty-five, twenty-one, that is for twenty thousand, a little over twenty thousand dollars being spent for administration, seventy-four hundred dollars being spent for the fire truck purchase in two thousand and eleven, and ninety-four hundred dollars being spent for recreational trails. The remaining portion of it goes to two thousand and three SLOs, thirty-one thousand, thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents for the cost of the ongoing Gothic Ferry Row project, and it's SLOs two thousand and seven to be amended, eighty-five thousand, six, ninety-four, thirty-four, for the new police headquarters completed in this current fiscal year. All these projects were listed in the original agreement, and they are still considered viable projects for this to be funneled, for the mon, monies to be funded to. Second is the DDA budget, if you remember several meetings ago, we went through the process, I guess, of identifying what needed to be included in the DDA budget, the net impact to the general fund is fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, increased to general fund revenues and expenses, and I look for the, I recommend the approval of this also.
Okay, any questions for Tom on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, DeCade, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. For the second reading, actual of a public hearing here, after Mr. Manino gets us kicked off.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, as you noted, this is the second reading, so I won't completely recap what went on during the first reading. If you recall, this is a request for a proposed text amendment. Brooke Hodge, owner of Will Day Spa, is currently located under the bridge here, and as part of her service establishment, is looking to add permanent makeup to the services that they offer, based on that, and discussions with Keith Lovell, best route to do that was to go through and do some text amendments, adding some definitions in our ordinance. Since the first reading and planning commission's recommend, recommendation of approval, we did get an email from Councilperson Brooke that had some concerns, and her concerns were the unintended consequences of the term camouflage tattooing, and with that, she actually offered some good suggestions, some other definitions she had read, we went back and our staff looked at the definition that she had referred to out of, I believe, the state of Nevada. With that, went back and altered the definition that we had offered to get rid of the concern she had, or to release or lower the concern she had, and with that, we are recommending approval of the revised definition as presented to you.
Okay.
time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any discussion? If not, a motion will be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we, do we need it with the addition? Cause it has changed.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, as revised.
Would you please make that?
Motion to approve as amended.
Seconded.
Amendmented and revised.
Are we good over there, Mr. Archer?
Yeah, I have a question, but I'm gonna let it pass.
Good.
Very unlike you, but we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Archer?
Do we, do we need it with the addition? Cause it has changed.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, as revised.
Would you please make that?
Motion to approve as amended.
Seconded.
Amendmented and revised.
Are we good over there, Mr. Archer?
Yeah, I have a question, but I'm gonna let it pass.
Good.
Very unlike you, but we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And mayor, I'd like to just, I think this is a good example of the city spinning off of the, uh, citizens academy. I didn't, when I read Lori's email, I did not know that there wasn't any other ordinances inside the state of Georgia that we could even look at, and we're one of the first cities. And I think that's a testament to our staff and, um, I guess to ourselves, that, you know, we are willing to work with people and figure out a way to, to make things right. So, thank you, Randy and staff.
Mr. Osborne, you have the next two, and if you'll lump those together for me, please.
Thank you. City of Cartersville staff and city attorney's office recommends that the city council vote to release the liens placed on these two properties as part of the five-year forgivable loan first-time homebuyers program. So at 30 Ann Circle and 119 Mercer Lane, the families have lived in the homes the required period of time.
Okay, any questions for Richard on either one of these two properties? And if there are none, if a motion would include both of these properties?
Motion to approve both properties.
Second for both properties.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously on both properties. Mr. Molnax, you got the next two.
Mayor, counsel, the first item is an additional task order to the contract we have with Weidman and Singleton Incorporated to provide engineering design services for our water treatment plant filter rehab project. The existing contract we have with them involved, uh, design and advertisement for bids. We're now ready to move to the next phase, which includes receipt of bids and construction services, which will be contract administration, project inspection. They have given us an amount not to exceed 69,010 dollars. This pr- the price is reasonable, given the scope of the project. It will be paid for with bond funds, and we do have E-Verify and Save documentation in hand.
Okay. Any questions for Ed on this item? And if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, motion is second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue, please.
The next item is just an inventory stocking of brass fittings. We received prices from three different suppliers. HD Supply submitted a low price in the amount of 35,297.67. This will be paid for from bud- budget, and we do have the E-Verify and Save documentation in hand.
Okay. Any questions on this item? And if not, motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve inventory restock.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir, mayor and counsel. Uh, this bid award is pertaining to our Dillinger Park pool improvements. Uh, bids were solicited, uh, for, uh, pool lighting. Uh, we received, uh, four bids back, uh, two, uh, one of them did not turn their information in for insurance and bid was rejected. One of them did not meet specifications, and I'm recommending the, uh, the low bid that met specifications from West Georgia Lighting in the amount of 51,160 dollars. Uh, all E-Verify and Save documentations were received.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Anderson on that item? All right, I do know that there's a gentleman here that would like to speak, uh, so Greg, if you'll step aside, and if you would, step forward and, uh, give your name and your address for our clerk, please.
My name's Cameron Rozinski. I represent North Cob electrical service. We were low bid on this and they said we did not meet specifications. I do believe we meet and exceed the specifications, and I bought a representative with the lighting company that we use install, and I'd like to explain to you how we feel, why we feel that way.
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Rob?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Rob Staples. I represent Musco Lighting. Um, my address is, uh, 1436 Cavaner Creek Road in Delana, Georgia. Um, here tonight, just to, uh, first of all, let you know, we, we had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Anderson and Mr. Porter the other day, uh, to tell them a little bit about Musco. Musco Lighting is not a council name. Uh, most of you have probably not heard of us. Uh, to give you a little quick background of who Musco Lighting is, uh, we are a sports lighting company, been around for over 35 years. Uh, we are the official lighting company of Little League. Uh, we do the Olympics, uh, Yankee Stadium, but we also do a lot of recreational ballfield lighting, high schools, uh, even here, uh, the new high school here in, uh, Bartow County, uh, just up the interstate, um, and even Cardiff High School, um, has Musco on it. So, so we're obviously around, but, uh, the, the, the question at hand here was, uh, the bid required that the pool be lit to a foot candle level, which is how you measure light, to 50-foot candles. Um, our bid provided that. Now, we did use a, a different type of fixture, uh, to do that. Uh, the bid required a thousand-watt fixture. The fixture we provided was a 1,500-watt fixture. Uh, the great part about it is, even with all the, uh, with our number of fixtures, we still have less energy requirements, uh, for the entire system. Um, the, uh, the issue at hand, I know that Mr. Anderson expressed his concern, was the glare from a 1,500-watt fixture compared to, uh, his specified, uh, Power Spot, a thousand-watt fixture. Um, I would encourage you to maybe take a little harder look at independent test data that's available from Musco, as well as the, uh, specification item, which was a GE Power Spot. Uh, you'll see that, uh, when you look at a sports lighting fixture, just to give you a quick overview, the glare is what you see from what's called the upper portion of a beam of light. Our fixture would actually be 30% less glare than the fixture that is specified. Uh, so obviously, as Mr. Rozinski stated, we would actually provide a better spill and glare control fixture, um, and which can be backed up, again, with independent data that we can provide to you, uh, or to the city and that, uh, any sports lighting manufacturer can provide. Um, and obviously, this just hasn't been, hasn't been looked at. Um, so again, if the, the assertion is that, uh, glare is the issue, uh, we believe we exceed that issue. Uh, and just to throw a couple of things out, our bid did come with a 25-year comprehensive warranty on the lighting system. Uh, the specification only asked for a seven-year warranty, which is just parts. Um, our warranty covers all parts, labor, and lamps for 25 years. Uh, we also guarantee the light levels, uh, will be at 50-foot candles for 25 years as well. Um, combine that with the fact that, uh, our bid with, uh, North Cob Electrical was $4,000 less. Uh, there's obviously a great advantage to the city, uh, to save on future maintenance costs, uh, as well as 15 to 20% energy over the next 25 years. So, uh, we would ask you to consider, uh, this information, uh, to maybe table this, take a little bit more look, let it allow us to provide some additional information, uh, and consider that, uh, there's a, a great benefit here to the city and, uh, you know, the 25-year warranty, and the fact that Musco, we actually can monitor that warranty remotely using, uh, a different technology. And that's what really sets our sports lighting system apart from, uh, other lighting manufacturers is, is the technology, uh, just as we don't use bag phones in our cars now, we have iPhones. Technology changes over the years, and we have an opportunity here to present that to you at a lower cost and ultimately a lower operating cost over the next 25 years. So, um, I appreciate your time. Again, appreciate Mr. Porter and Mr. Anderson's time earlier this week, but we felt it was in your best interest to hear this, um, and also make a decision based on, you know, the long-term, uh, you know, what's gonna be the best value for the city, uh, over the next 25 years.
Thank you. Any questions for the last two gentlemen? Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, mayor. I, I do have representatives from, uh, West Georgia Lighting and, and GE who is furnishing their fixtures, and, you know, they can tell you the good things about their fixtures too, but I...
You still look, you don't want this guy's lighting, though, right?
I recommend West Georgia Lighting. I, I wanted the 20, the 1,000-watt fixtures. That's what, was what I discussed, and that was the bid that I asked for.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, is there a specific reason that you required?
Well, in our, uh, our fixtures, uh, we have thousand-watt fixtures and one, and 1,500-watt fixtures in our parks. Uh, for our pole mounting heights, under, under 45 feet, they're all 1,000-watt fixtures. Over 55 feet for our sports fields are all 1,500-watt fixtures. And we just felt like there's a better light, uh, with the 1,000-watt fixtures. You've got 28 fixtures up there that's putting out, uh, the, the required foot candles. If, you know, if one, two, three, or four are out of those fixtures, you know, you're, you're not gonna miss anything. If you've got one, two, three, four out of their fixtures, they're, you know, there'll be a difference. I mean, I, I had, I had researched this before I put this bid out, and I, uh, I felt like this is the best bid, and it's the meets the specifications.
Okay. Any other questions?
Greg, as far as the warranties are concerned, do you feel seven years is sufficient? I mean, you deal with the lighting all the time. Is seven years a good timeframe?
Well, it is for, I mean, it is. I mean, that, that is the, you know, I hate to say the, the, that is the, uh, that's, that's the, uh, the standard within the industry. However, Musco does have a, you know, they have, I guess they put their warranty up, I don't know how many years ago. I guess Rob could tell you that.
Greg, when you put out these specs, did you do it also thinking about the neighborhood around Dillinger?
I did. They, they have full, full glare control, which is the fixtures that GE does, but it's, but now Musco has, has full glare control also.
Okay.
Matt, I hate to do this. I'm, I'd like to ask one additional question I should have asked when they were up here, just very briefly. If you...
Yes, sir.
And I know you're, you're not really in control of the quote, uh, of what was requested, but if this light is so mu- and this is just for me, and I appreciate you guys coming and, and, and sharing your point of view, and we always welcome that. Uh, but for the thousand-watt fixture, do you guys not have that as an opportunity? Would it, I mean, if this light is so much better than, I guess, what we've asked for in specs, if you had matched the spec, would it, would it have been cheaper or is it more expensive? Why is, help me out with that.
Sure. No, great question, uh, and, and again, Mr. Anderson, uh, asked the same question of us, uh, when we met on Tuesday. Uh, yes, Musco does produce a thousand-watt fixture, um, but as I explained to Mr. Porta and Mr. Anderson, um, with the variant technology, and basically what it comes down to, it, when you talk about sports lighting and the output of the light, you deal with lumens, lumen output. Uh, a typical thousand-watt fixture produces 108,000 lumens. Um, our 1,500-watt fixture only produces 134,000 lumens. Now, 134,000 lumens, we were gonna use 16 fixtures. They're gonna use eight, uh, 28,000 108,000 lumens. So technically, there's gonna be more glare from that fixture, if you do, do the simple math. There's more lumens, which ultimately produces candela values, which causes glare. We chose the 1,500-watt fixture, uh, because, one, we knew with the technology we have that we have over a thousand different ways that we can shift the light around. Uh, most manufacturers use about six NEMA types. Uh, we have well over a thousand NEMA types, so we can spread that light out, uh, much more efficiently. Uh, so although we produce, I, I guess, if you do the math, it's about 20% more lumens per fixture. Uh, the difference is, we're putting 86% of the light on the, on the pool area. You, um, asked about, uh, the neighbors and whatnot. Um, if you look at the other fixture that's specified, although it is a glare control fixture, again, all glare control fixtures are not the same. Uh, we're putting 86% of the light on the field. If you look at independent testing reports, which, again, we can provide, um, no problem and in any lighting manufacturer can provide, uh, you'll see that if you look at the angles of the lights being aimed, um, that the candela values, again, these are all based on, uh, actual data, actual fact, not conjecture, not, well, we think this or we think that. Uh, looking at the data of how the lights are aimed, what the candela values will be, um, you know, candela value for lobium headlights, about 12,000. Uh, that's about what our fixture will be producing, uh, when you're standing off-site. Uh, these other type fixtures are well up in the 40 to 50,000 candela values. Again...
I hear what you're, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I hear what you're saying, but what I'm, my question back to is, if you would have met the, are your lights, if you would have, instead of, so to speak, teaching us on what we probably should have asked for in the specs, if you would have met the specs, would, you know, with what we asked, would you have still been, would you have been cheaper? Or are your lights that, that meet our spec, are they more expensive?
Well, we certainly would have hoped so. Uh, I, I can't, I can't spec, uh, speculate that, because obviously, we provided a price to a contractor who provided, uh, the labor and installation cost, uh, for that.
But you understand where we are. Our hands are sort of tired.
I certainly do.
We sent out a spec. It would, and I'm just trying to figure out why you didn't send the spec back as we asked.
Sure. Well, in the specification, I had actually emailed Mr. Anderson, uh, when I saw the specification, because it stated in the specification that only GE Power Spot thousand-watt fixtures would be accepted. Uh, so I had to ask him the question, um, could I bid, uh, the project? Um, I did meet with Mr. Anderson on site, um, and he said, yes, you, you need to meet the specification, you know, can you guys provide 50-foot candles of maintained light? That was our goal, obviously. So, and, and that's the reason why we, we chose to go that route. We felt it would be better. But again, we understand, i- if that's the difference of giving up a 25-year warranty, uh, then, you know, again, but we want you to be aware, because, you know, down the road, hopefully, there's a chance to, uh, look at other technologies, uh, for your park system.
Mr. Archer, our city attorney.
One question.
Yes, sir.
The spec call for pole height not exceeding 45 feet out of the ground, what would have been the pole height for you above?
Uh, I think we had, it was at 40-foot, I believe.
Out of the ground?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't be taller than 45 feet?
Uh, if they wanted it to, but no, sir. I believe that we provided was 40-foot mounting height.
Thank you, man.
Okay, thank you.
You ready for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that would go with, uh, the bid recommended by our department head to, uh, West Georgia Lighting for 51,106 dollars.
Agreed. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, I didn't...
I didn't vote, cause I don't, I didn't know how to vote, so call it abstaining.
Carrie, did you vote in the favor of that?
I'm actually opposed. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, under statute, there requires four votes to pass, and in such a case, I have the right to vote, and I'll vote in favor of the motion, so it carries.
Thank you.
Um, we do have to add an item, uh, to the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to add that item.
Motion to add the item.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added to the agenda.
Okay, mayor, under the code, anytime we appoint the position of department head requires my recommendation, council's approval, we have received the resignation of Bobby Elliott this week, who's resigned to pursue other opportunities, and my recommendation to you would be to appoint Tommy Sanders, who's presently the city engineer, to fill that role.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on this item? And if not, motion will be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Tommy. We do have a couple of items. Is there anything else that needs to come for council this evening? Step forward.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Tim McClung. I'm a battalion chief of the fire department, and I'm going to make this short, because my chief doesn't even know why I'm up here. But I want to take a moment to, on, two months ago, I had a massive, what they call a massive heart attack, what we call the widow maker in the fire department. It was a very scary time, and I just, I want to publicly thank each one of you. We've had conversations, I've gotten phone calls, I've gotten text messages, and just the support from the city is, is just overwhelming. It really has been. I just want to thank you for that. The good news is that I'm on the mend and feeling stronger every day and back at work. And I also want to thank my chief for supporting me through this time, not only as an employee, but to my family, which has really been a, a tough time at 43-years-old to go through. So I want to publicly thank him. So, thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Glad to keep you around.
So glad you could. Good.
Diane, you had something you wanted to mention. I was going to give you that opportunity.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good luck following that.
No, we're all very proud of you, and just so glad you're in good health. You look great. This weekend, April the 6th, is the torchlight at the Etowah Indian Mounds. We were at, we're hoping for 75, and, and we already have 100-plus coming to eat, an outdoor barbecue. We have opened it up for anyone else to come. It's the $5 just to get into the mounds. If you want to come and enjoy the hayrides and the torchlight and storytelling, and without dinner, and you just come to enjoy all that. So, open it up. Come and support the Etowah Indian Mounds. Folks, it's a real treasure here in, in our county and adjacent to our city, and they need your help. So, hope to see you 6 o'clock on Saturday night.
Thank you, Diana. Be remiss if we didn't mention to keep the thoughts of the folks out of Plant Bowen active in your hearts, if you would. If you didn't know, there was a, there was some sort of explosion out there about 4:00 this afternoon. Still kind of an ongoing situation. I don't know how much information is out there, but, but certainly, I'm sure our public safety folks are, are on standby if needed, and I know that a lot of other jurisdictions were as well. And just a reminder that every day, we need to be thankful for, and that we need to be appreciative of those people that go running to danger when there is some. So, we'll hope that the, as information comes out, it's not as bad as, as some people might think it is. So, if there's nothing else to add, motion to adjourn. So move.